All right, we are ready whenever you are.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I will bring the meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission of March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. We begin each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God.
May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Here.
Commissioner Clements.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Vice Chair Ruth.
Here.
And Chair Garvey.
Here. The next item on our agenda this evening is public comment. I'll read the procedure. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on our future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone in the waiting room this evening that would like to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Just another couple more seconds. Sarah, do you see anyone in the waiting room?
Not at this time.
All right, let's move on to our next agenda item. The approval of the minutes from our March first, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
No.
None for me.
None for me.
Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I will move we approve the minutes of the March first, two thousand and twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second roll call.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruth.
Yes.
And Chair Garvey.
Yes. The next item, six eight, is a public hearing. This is a public hearing for seventeen thirty-seven Caesar Street, APN zero five one, three nine four, one eight zero, TRE, two thousand and twenty dash zero zero one two zero. Review to consider the removal of one protected coast live oak tree with a circumference of a hundred and fifty-one inches. I understand that this item will be continued to a date uncertain. At this point, I would entertain a motion that we continue this hearing.
So motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruth.
Yes.
And Chair Garvey.
Yes. Moving on to the presentation. This is a presentation from staff on the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, two thousand and twenty. It is recommended that the Planning Commission receive a presentation on the city of San Carlos's two thousand and twenty Housing Element Annual Progress Report. Lisa, does staff have a presentation for us this evening?
Yes, we do, Chair Garvey, and I'll be go ahead, I'll be making that presentation to the commission this evening. And I would just like to mention that our acting housing economic development and housing manager, Adam Aaronson, is also joining me this evening in case the commission has any specific questions on some of the programs that our housing section administers as part of making sure we meet our housing element actions and implementation items. So as the commission may recall, every year, cities and counties all over the state of California are required to submit an annual progress report to the State Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Planning and Research, indicating how the city has made progress towards meeting its housing element. Especially in particular, in meeting the regional housing needs allocation that are assigned to each city and county for the current planning period. So the current planning period that we are in today encompasses the years two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-three. And of course, most of you know, we are in the middle, not in the middle, almost in the middle, hopefully getting closer to the middle, of updating our current housing element for the next housing element cycle, which is two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and thirty-one. And there is a typo on this slide, we're in the year two thousand and twenty-one, just wanted to make that clear. So essentially, what we need to do is report for the pre, every April first, the Housing Element, Housing Element Annual Progress Report is due on April the first. And what it does, it reports for the period of the calendar year prior, previously. So we are reporting for what activity occurred from January one through December thirty-one in the calendar year two thousand and twenty. And that Housing Element Annual Progress Report essentially consists of nine items. And there were seven last time we did this, but two additional items have been added to the annual progress report. And so the first really has to do with, you know, what did our application activity look like? How many development applications did the city receive to the Planning Division where an entitlement was requested? And also to the Building Division, because some housing units can submit directly to the Building Division. And that one, for example, would be any junior accessory dwelling unit or any accessory dwelling unit. Those are considered to be permitted by rights, so there's no discretionary action required. However, when there's new multifamily or mixed use, or even a brand-new house, single-family house being built, most of us are aware that those do require a planning entitlement. So we track both what was coming through to the Planning Division and also what was coming through to the Building Division. Probably the biggest items that we sort of look at to see where we're at are items number two and three. And number two has to do with our annual building activity report. And essentially, what that is, is the state wants to know, well, how many building permits were issued to construct a new unit? And basically, that feeds into our progress towards our regional housing needs allocation. And I'll go over those numbers just as a refresher to the commission. And there's also a couple of other things that we need to notify the state as they're applicable. One has to do with any sites that we may have been required to rezone in order to meet our housing needs. Fortunately, for San Carlos, that wasn't part of the work that we needed to do for our current housing element. So there, it wasn't necessary that we had to go into our zoning and rezone some areas in order to accommodate our arena. But if we had, this is where we would report them, but that's not applicable to us. The other item is number five has to do with how are we doing in implementing all of the action items that are contained in our housing element? And in the packet, there's a lot of detail about that. Most of these are ongoing. Some of them have already been completed and some of them have recently been completed. So I'll touch on a few highlights that we did accomplish last year. And finally, six and seven has to do with some particular items that may apply to cities that didn't apply to us. Six, seven, and eight, they didn't apply. And then as far as number nine goes, this is a new item. This is referred to as the LEAP grant reporting. Unfortunately, for San Carlos, we did receive some grant funds and we're using those to off the, offset the cost of the update to our first current housing element update project. So I'll get into the numbers next. In terms of housing applications and building permit activity, first, we saw that last year, there were a number of applications submitted to the Planning Department, the Planning Division, excuse me. And those basically were requesting planning applications for eighty-seven units. And then on the, and as far as what was approved last year, what applications actually got approved? Well, we approved applications for sixty-two units. And I would say that a majority of these are not necessarily net new units. We do get a lot of activity in the single-family zoning district whereby people want to demolish an existing home and rebuild a new home. However, we do have some net new units, and I'll go into those in just a moment. I hope you can see that. My computer wants to restart. I certainly hope it doesn't do that right now. In terms of how many building permits were issued to construct new units, there were sixty-six. Twenty-three of those were very low, and this had to do with the building permits that were issued to construct eight seventeen Walnut, which the Planning Commission may recall, that was a project that came before the commission. Twenty-three very low, and then forty-three above moderate or market rate homes. And of those, fifty-two are considered net new units. So of course, we had to demolish some to build, to build some new, some new projects. So just as a reminder, in terms of what were our, or are our regional housing needs allocation numbers for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three Housing Element Cycle? That's a total of five hundred and ninety-six units as compared to what our current numbers are, which are two thousand seven hundred and thirty-five. But this is basically how the five hundred and ninety-six units were broken down. We are required to plan for and make sure that we have zoning and programs in place to construct a hundred and ninety-five very low-income units, a hundred and seven low-income units, one hundred and eleven moderate-income units, and those three make up our below moderate, excuse me, or below-market-rate housing types. And then above moderate or market rate was one hundred and eighty-three for a total of five hundred and ninety-six. So if we're looking at this as year by year, as a year-by-year progression towards how are we doing in terms of meeting our regional housing needs allocation and our progress to date? This slide shows that for the last year, two thousand and twenty, we approved seventeen net new very low-income units. And these are very difficult to get, as you can see in the prior years. You know, it's not indicative that these are kind of coming through the door and easy, easy to get, you know, built and constructed. Where we are doing very well is the above-moderate category, where we saw a total of thirty-five net new units for a total of fifty-two net new units in the year two thousand and twenty, which isn't bad considering, you know, it was sort of an unusual year, and we're still sort of kind of making our way through that. But in terms of the activity that has gone on in the Planning and Building Divisions, we're still getting a lot of applications. It's not really slowing down. As you can see in this particular table, the total units by year have sort of varied. They started out quite low, twenty-three units in two thousand and fifteen, and then it jumped quite high in twenty, that's, excuse me, there's a typo there, in the year two thousand and sixteen for a total of three hundred and eighty-five. And those were very much due to building permit issuance for the Transit Village and also Ulaquaza. And then we sort of kind of bend in the forty, in the forties and twenties range, but this year was even, you know, a little bit higher than last year. So overall, we're doing quite well in terms of the overall number. But again, as you can see, there's still a remaining three hundred and sixty-four units of below-market-rate units that, you know, we're aiming for. But as many cities will attest, these are very difficult to achieve. And certainly, more efforts and incentives and maybe different programs need to be in place in order to really achieve these numbers. And that's one of the things that we are going to be looking at in the next Housing Element Update Cycles. What are some ways that we can, you know, perform a little bit better or a lot better in terms of reading, meeting the below-market-rate housing unit category? As far as programs in the housing element, essentially, they're divided into seven primary sort of topic areas. The first is really to promote preservation of existing housing, especially affordable housing. And the second is kind of a state mandate whereby they roll in an energy efficiency component into the housing element update. Our third section of programs and goal, programs and actions is to really encourage housing close to transit. So that's why we have certain zoning in place along the El Comunal Corridor and our mixed-use and, and our downtown core and mixed company and adjacent mixed-use areas. The fourth is to really promote second units, and we've made some progress in that last year. And the fifth is to assist in the development of affordable housing. So if there's any questions on that, of course, the commission may recall, we have partnered with some affordable housing providers to get the below-market-rate units constructed in our city. The sixth is what can we do to remove any governmental constraints that we have towards the production of new housing? And then the seventh category has to do with special needs population. So all of the detail in that, like I mentioned before, a lot of the programs and activities that we have are ongoing. Some have been met and some include some financial contribution, contributions to below-market-rate housing providers and organization and nonprofit, nonprofit groups. One of the key highlights last year has to do with adopting a new accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And the commission may recall that over the past several years, there's been quite a new, few new laws concerning accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. So last year was a great year for us because we analyzed and gathered all those state-required requirements for accessory dwelling units, and we packaged them together in a new ordinance. And we're doing really well. I would say that if we look into the detail on our, some of our charts, we can see that a lot of new units that have come forward towards counting our overall housing production targets have been in the form of accessory dwelling units. So certainly, their relaxation and the, and making it easier for folks to construct an accessory dwelling unit certainly is working in our community. And then going forward, this year, we're going to be working on updating our below-market-rate housing ordinance. And as I mentioned before, the housing element is, update is well underway. So just to sort of touch on the housing element update, just for a moment, I think this is my last slide. I just wanted to mention to the commission, kind of an overview of where we're at and where we're headed. And so San Carlos is a little bit early out of the gate as compared to some other cities in San Mateo County. We've already had two workshops, one last year in November, and then one at the beginning of this year. And where we're at right now is, especially since our second workshop, we started having a conversation with the community about what criteria should we be looking at to cite the additional housing needs in our city? You know, what are some principles and guiding, guidance, guidance factors that we should be looking at in terms of where we put the new housing? We're looking at also potential land use changes, what would need to be changed, changed in our land use element, and looking at some housing sites and solutions. Our third workshop that we're currently preparing for now is estimated to occur in late April and early May. So that's where we'll be bringing forward some case studies, really kind of peeling away the factors that can contribute to getting more units within a particular massing, without getting into too much of the details now. One of the things that has come up certainly in our community is the massing and the scale of new development, how well that fits in, and whereby we place that, and what zoning standards might need to be changed in order to get more density within a particular volume, massing or volume of a building. Later this year, we can expect some drafts starting to kind of come forward. And we're also going to be starting some coordination with the state. As the commission may recall, the housing element is required to be certified, certified by the State Department of the Housing and Community Development. So early coordination really helps out towards ensuring that we are preparing a plan that is meeting all of the state requirements and all of the sites that we're looking at and how we're justifying the use of certain sites in order to meet our arena is really penciling in in a way that the state is requiring, is requiring us to look at that. A couple of reminders for our Housing Element web, or update. We have our own project website, which is sancarlos2040.org. And then just very recently, the county and, is working through the Twenty-One Elements Group, which assists all cities in San Mateo County towards the development of housing element updates. They've recently released a website, which is called letstalkousing.org. And so all of the cities have a presence there, including San Carlos, with a link to our process. And then a lot of really good links and information for the public to be aware of. So it's kind of like a really nice one-stop shop for people in San Mateo County to sort of kind of get a picture of what's happening in the different cities. And then if they have a particular, you know, comment or request or want to get engaged in a couple of another, another couple of cities, there is a portal to do that. And the group is starting to prepare for additional outreach. So they're just starting their efforts, but we'll be able to have a presence there as well because we are actually part of Twenty-One Elements. And so it's just another area where people can learn about our process and learn about all of the other cities and what they're doing and what their arena numbers are. So this is a great resource to have. So with that, that concludes my presentation. And this item will be going forward to the City Council as required next Monday night, a week from today. Our staff will be essentially giving the same presentation with really asking the council, you know, directing staff to submit it to the State, State Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Planning and Research. Thank you.
Do we get to answer ask questions now?
Oh, sure. Yeah, this is my last slide.
Okay. The housing numbers that you showed in the table, those were permits issued or completed, ready to move in? I didn't catch.
Oh, right. So that's a good question. Thank you. Happy to clarify that. These are building permits issued. So what we are allowed to count in terms of meeting our arena, where the state says, okay, we want to see, you know, how is each city and county doing? We are instructed to count building permit issuance. So it's not the final inspection or the certificate of occupancy. They really, and they don't want us to count where we, you know, granted a planning entitlement, because sometimes things can be entitled, but then, you know, maybe they're, they're never really implemented. So the state requires that we count when the building permit has been issued to construct those permitted units. So these are building permits issued.
And so do these numbers, they do not include ADUs because those are entitled?
No, they do include. So when, it's a, it's a, it's a building permit to construct any new unit.
I see.
Whether that's an ADU or a junior accessory dwelling unit or a single-family home that's a net new home, or, you know, new apartments or condominiums that have been issued in a mixed-use or multifamily house.
And in two thousand and twenty, how many of these new units were ADUs?
Of the ones that were ADUs, I would say, I need to look at my report here. But I would say that a majority were of the thirty-five units that your above-market-rate units that are shown here. A majority were ADUs. I would say maybe we only had about, you know, maybe three net new single-family homes. I can get the exact number, but I remember when I entered it in, it wasn't, these weren't, the thirty-five units were not, you know, apartment units or condos as part of the mixed use. Majority of them are, are, are ADUs, new ADUs.
Okay, that, that's a nice trend.
Lisa, the, the follow-up to David's good question that I had was, and were those after we changed the code? Therefore, like, did we actually reduce barriers and promoted this, this outcome?
That's correct. So the number of new laws that started to surface started, I would say, in about two thousand and sixteen. And then since then, they started, you know, we started seeing more laws where the state was saying, okay, now we want, you know, cities to reduce setbacks. Or now we want to make, you know, changes to the process. Or now we're requiring that cities can no longer factor in lot coverage or floor area ratios. So I would say since those state laws have been, you know, coming online, we started to see more and more ADUs be permitted. And the last set of laws really had to.
Lisa, did we lose you?
I think we lost Lisa.
That's not a good sign.
I'm sorry, my camera's off because my internet's a little slow.
But Adam, we have you.
Hey, guys. Yeah, I'm still here.
All right. And I, and I appreciate Vice Chair Ruth jumping in. I, I, I thanked Lisa for an excellent presentation and was on mute. So thank you. Thank you.
It did seem quiet there for a minute.
Adam, do you think we should wait a minute for Lisa, or would you like to step in here, or?
Yeah, I'm happy to try and answer any questions you guys have. I'm guessing that her computer just restarted, so hopefully she'll get back on here in a minute or two. But if you guys want to try and keep going, I can, yeah, I can try to answer in her place.
Adam, maybe one, one follow-up. Are there a couple of things about the eight seventeen Walnut project that stand out as, what made a difference in bringing that project to life? And therefore, should we do more of that?
Yeah, I mean, really what happened eight seventeen Walnut is that the city owned the property. So we had the ability to kind of do whatever we wanted with it. And, you know, with the great need for affordable housing in our community, we were able to move forward with affordable housing project. The tricky thing with that property is that it, it is a small property. We can't fit that many units on it. We have twenty-four units total, twenty-three of them are the affordable studio units. And usually, it's hard to find an affordable housing developer that will partner with you on a project like that. So we were somewhat lucky to find someone willing to do it with us. And part, that's part of the reason why it's studio units, too. Yeah, really, the, the main thing that encouraged the development of that was just that the city had control of the property already. And so we were able to move forward however we wanted. And there, there had been affordable housing units on that property for a while already.
And, you know, in your work with the City Council, is there any plan to highlight other parcels, if any, that the city owns? Or highlight parcels that appear to be underutilized or undermarketed that the city could acquire? Seems like the city has to be a market maker here, is what you're saying, and that makes sense.
So there's a couple of different things we have going on right now. I'm not sure if you guys have been briefed recently on the Cherry Street project that the city is working on. That's another property that the city's working on in partnership with Hip Housing. They're a affordable housing developer in the area. And in that instance, one parcel is owned by the city and another parcel is owned by Hip. And we're going to merge the two together so that we can then create one larger development. And that property looks like it'll be somewhere between thirty to thirty-five units, but probably larger units with more bedrooms, so more aimed towards families rather than studio units. And we're, we're still in the, the early stages of working on that and kind of setting up pre-development loan terms with the developer. But it's looking like it will move forward, so it's an exciting project that we'll get going. And then I think you also kind of asked about the city maybe acquiring market rate units and that kind of thing. There's a couple of different joint powers authorities throughout the state that we're not currently working with, but we're looking into potentially working with, that essentially, they will issue bonds to acquire market-rate properties in different parts of the city and then turn those into affordable housing. They just need approval from the city to issue bonds in the city and for the city to potentially, down the line, take on the proceeds of any excess revenue from those projects or take over the property in the future if the city wished to do so. So that's one thing we're looking at that could kind of help with your second question of the city trying to help acquire market rate units and make them affordable.
Great. Well, thank you for both of those answers. And I, I think, you know, those give me hope that there's an opportunity for other notable blocks of below-market-rate housing that the city can actually control, because I think, you know, as Lisa pointed out, it's, with all of the great intention, the progress still leaves us three hundred and forty-three units kind of behind where we'd like to be. So we have a ways to go.
I think I might have seen that Lisa rejoined us.
Welcome back, Lisa. Thank you. I apologize. I Thank you. I apologize. I had a feeling my computer was going to restart and that's exactly what it did. So it just knocked me out. So I'm glad Adam's here.
No worries. I, um, if it's okay with Chair, I had a question and a comment. First, a comment, Adam, I am very deep into the analysis of the product you are describing for modding bonds. And so let me know if you want to talk. I've spent a very long time and a lot of hours on this. So I, you, I, you probably don't know, want, want to know all of it. So uh, let me know. I, I just had a follow on question on ADUs. And I'm glad to see that we're getting some traction because again, I think we have, was it how much percent? Ninety, eighty percent of our land, residential land and single family. So ADUs is the right kind of strategy for us. Has the trend been up over time for the volume? Lisa, do you know?
Yes, I would say very much so. So since um the state passed the new laws, the, you know, some of the first wave, you know, coming in, I think it's 2016, we started to see an uptick in applications. And then right now, we're kind of in the, in a, in a spot where it's, we're in the thirties range of new ADUs being submitted uh per calendar year. It might have even been a little bit higher this past year in the forties. But this is starting, coming from a place where in San Carlos, you know, we were seeing maybe four to seven ADUs per year. And now we're seeing 30, maybe 40, you know, within the past few years. So certainly, um, people are recognizing, you know, that the cities are, are promoting these or it's a necessity. It's hard to say, you know, cert- because a lot of, when the new laws were passed, there was a lot of publicity about ADUs, you know. So, you know, there was, I think there were more than I've ever seen. So I don't know if the response is that people are more aware or the fact that, you know, it's, it's a lot easier now, especially recently, within the last year, because we're not letting lot coverage stand in the way. We're not letting any kind of floor area ratio maximum stand in the way. So it, it's really an, an interesting story, but definitely in San Carlos, we've seen a lot more, you know, like jump from four to seven to now twenties and thirties and forties is really good. Yeah.
That's great. Um, two comments on that. I know San Mateo County and all the work that they have done with the calculator and their knowledge sharing is incredible. And no other area has that kind of knowledge sharing and they did it so quickly. So uh, that's, we're really leading the area in that, I think, here. So it's good to see the volume picking up in different. I wanted to ask two questions. One, are we reflecting those generally as above moderate? And two, also, if you could tell me a little bit about whether junior ADUs are getting tracked or getting traction here and what that looks like.
So first, we're tracking JD, JDUs and ADUs. We're tracking both of them. And then, yes, we are counting those in the above moderate category. Um, like you mentioned, San Mateo County and 21 Elements in particular, they've just been doing an amazing job in terms of the data gathering and really kind of promoting this and the second unit calculator tools and all that. One of the surveys that they recently completed, and it's not quite published yet, was um a survey um for those that have recently built ADUs. And I think this is even extends past San Mateo County, really trying to get a sense of what those are renting for. I believe uh that um as part of our arena progress, there is a way to be able to count the ADUs as in the affordable category. But we need to have um a methodology and some data to really back that up. And there, it could be that a percentage could be counted. But we, um, but we have provided, um, you know, the group with a list of all of the ADUs that have been applied for and contact information. So they actually go out and do the survey to try and, and determine what those are, are renting for. So hopefully in the near future, we'll have some data to, to be able to look at, to see what we can do with that. But that's certainly a question, you know, a lot of cities have because with all the ADUs coming online and that's kind of really the intent of them, you know, to, to be um more accessible, more affordable than, you know, a, a standard condo or an apartment sometimes and definitely a single family home.
Yeah, definitely. So, and I appreciate the uh planning collaborative and the consultants' work to try to get um the state to agree on the methodology so that jurisdictions can kind of use that data, even though it's a little uh smaller than people would have liked, probably because of COVID. Because we had a meeting on it in San Jose. I know they've got data from the East Bay also. So if HCD will sign off on it, it would be great, um, you know, to track either statewide or, you know, if they would look at the county because that's kind of a bigger set of data or whatever they would accept, we would go by. So, so that's good news. Okay, thank you.
Lisa, this is Ellen with, with just a couple of questions. Does the unbuilt portion of our current arena allocation get added on to the new allocation that's coming next year to total up for an even bigger number? Or how do they account in the allocation for the fact that we didn't fully build out 100% of our old allocation?
Well, this is uh the data that we send them every year on how we're meeting our arena is something that they, that is um looked at. The arena methodology is, is one that is very complex. And I won't try to break it down right here tonight. But I will say that as part of the workshops that are coming up that Barrett and Driscoll are leading for 21 Elements does include a specific workshop just on the arena. So um if anyone is listening or tuning in tonight and, you know, certainly those participants that have come um our way through our workshops, we're definitely going to let them know about it. Because, you know, the arena methodology is the same for, you know, every city and county in the, in the Bay Area region. So um, but to answer your question, they do not add up. So our arena uh that we have right now, that it's draft and it's, it's likely to get adopted, is the 2,735. So these remaining units do not get added. However, um, I will say that um cities that, you know, are very much behind in um, in producing below market rate units are sort of um put into a category where they may be um, where it may triggered uh, trigger what's called SB 35, which is um sort of, it's a state mandate that says that any city or county that hasn't produced a certain number um is now required to um undergo a faster permit um entitlement process whereby um a cer- if, if a developer comes in, I'm sorry, this is a little bit complex. I'm just trying to make sure that I share this correctly. But if a developer comes in and submits a project with a certain amount of below market rate units, then through SB 35, the process is fat, fast tracked. And, you know, there's, you have to be able to approve this project in, in so many uh months. Um, there's a requirement for that and, you know, less discretionary back and forth. And really, um, you know, the project meets the zoning standards, then it just needs to get approved. So it's a certain kind of process that cities may be required to abide by if they're very um efficient in their below market rate housing units. So there, and there's a certain formula depending on that for San Carlos. Um, we haven't had a project that triggers SB 35. So I think it's um good that we're able to show that we're issuing building permits in the very low um market rate category um to be able to show the state that we are making progress, you know, slowly, little by little. But these are very, very hard units to come by. So um, so that, that's one way in which, I guess, to answer your question, does the progress sort of translate into certain requirements that we may need to abide by? But they are not added on into the next arena allocation.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful. And my second and last question is, is very basic. What is the commercial development bonus? I was reading in your presentation, I think you may have mentioned it, that we didn't approve or e- engage in any of those this year. But I did, and I went back into the attached packet and they do have a definition. And it's one of those definitions that unless you know what it is, you're not going to understand the definition. What is that in, 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 really, in the one or two sentences?
Yeah, I think what I would need to do is to, um, because it hasn't applied to San Carlos, I haven't really researched, you know, the details of that, but that's certainly something I can get back to you on. Because it could be that it, it's something, you know, that we want to be aware of in the future. But as of now, it's, none of the projects have been, um, it's just not applicable. But that's a really good question and, and I, and I'd have to look into that for you.
Oh, and I did have one other, one other question. For the number of houses that were built this year, did, did that trend line, is that similar to what our neighboring cities went through?
Uh, you know, the, the arena progress is something that is probably going to be shared through 21 Elements because, you know, we're all working together and sharing information. And as soon as our report is done, we usually share that with the group. And we can definitely bring back um how other cities are doing in terms of their reports. But I, I don't have them yet. And it could be that, you know, they're all currently working on them. Usually, most jurisdictions do, you know, they're using every minute of the hour until that April 1st deadline, deadline to get theirs done. So I should be able to get that information uh to the commission um after, after April 1st, when they're all completed. So at this time, I, I don't know, but I guess we can look at past years. But if that's something the commission would be interested in, um, I'm certain that, you know, through 21 Elements and all of the collaboration that we do, share between cities, that's information that's easy to get and kind of put together in, in one table, which I think would be really interesting to see as well.
Yeah, I think that would be very interesting to see. And you did mention in your presentation that 21 Elements is a resource for us and it helps us learn what other cities are doing. And, and I'm just so fortunate, we're just so fortunate that we have them as a resource. So good, good point. Thank you.
I'd like to add really quickly then in the South Bay, uh, for San Jose, we saw a dip because of COVID and the number of buildings pulling permits. Um, the permits that we had, because, you know, there are a lot of bigger projects and a lot of those came to a screeching halt when COVID hit in 2020 and got delayed. The um ADUs continue to escalate. And um, single family homes are not as big of a share of our new products. So, but the, the AD, everything slowed slightly in the last year. All the larger buildings slowed more than slightly.
Yeah, that's really interesting because I would say um that we also, you know, did not see a lot of um multifamily and mixed use kind of happening in that, you know, in the past year. Um, there's been a little bit and there'll be some coming forward before the planning commission. Um, but, you know, it's just like maybe on a smaller scale, it seems sort of a similar situation here as well. Definitely those ADUs have helped on our numbers, you know, be such that they are not incredibly low in the above mo- mo- uh moderate category. Yeah.
Okay. I have a comment and question uh for Adam or Lisa or Kristen. Building on what Christian just said, uh, do you know if the state OPR or the housing development people there have considered or made any adjustments uh based on 2020 and the pandemic? And so many people working at home that don't have to commute and don't have to live near their offices anymore. It's going to have an impact on the number of housing new units required and at, at moderate or uh below market rate housing too. Any, any clue on that?
Well, what I have heard is that um the methodology hasn't changed. Um, and the numbers aren't likely to change because of the, this sort of very unique and um, quite frankly, abnormal situation that we are finding ourselves in. And, you know, there's been a lot of talk um that, you know, things are going to come back. It's just sort of more like a resettling of um people. I think we all can, you know, see that there's definitely movement around in the communities with some of the vacancies for apartment units and, and, you know, even housing sales. But it's just sort of like maybe people are, have left to, to go live in another part of the Bay Area, but are, could be coming back. So there's a lot of conversation about that. But what I have heard is that the numbers are not going to be changing because of this. So I think this isn't the end of that kind of discussion and probably will be studied for quite some time. But um what I'm hearing is that there will be no changes.
Yeah, there will be no changes.
Change is constant.
Changing conditions, yes.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm sure a lot of people are definitely looking into that. It's, it's fascinating. But yeah, we, we can rest assured that the number that we have before us is the number that we're going to need to plan for. Yeah. So. Well, thank you all. Good questions.
Lisa, just a quick process question. This isn't a public hearing. Might there be people that want to comment? Or, or I, I don't know if I should open it up and offer it if there are uh no further questions from my fellow commissioners.
Yes, um, thank you for that reminder. I do have a slide in case there's anybody um watching and would like to make some comments. We'd be happy to hear them.
I had one last quick add on to the last cogent comment, which is just the state continues to think about uh legislation every year to make municipalities more and more responsible for meeting the housing element goals. And um, and so, you know, there are bills to watch every year as to what kind of penalties per se that cities would get if, if the goals are not met. So, you know, changing conditions, amusing until it means something more serious for cities. So it's just something, um, you know, if um planning staff has any updates on bills that you're watching that are troublesome regarding Rena, as we talk about Rena and the housing element through the next year, that would be helpful to hear about too.
Yeah, I think that would be great, especially um so that it doesn't come as some sort of surprise because there is one that I can think of, um SB nine, which I'm sure we're following and looking at as well. And it's making some traction, but this is one that would affect um single family zoning um whereby um by right, you could build a duplex. And because we have ADU laws on the books, so far it looks like those would be um included within it. But of course, it's still being reviewed and I'm sure a lot of cities are submitting letters and, and comments. League of California Cities, I think, has uh provided a position statement on this. But right now in San Carlos, if one wanted to build a duplex on a single family lot, um, it requires a conditional use permit. So it's just another layer of entitlement and conditional use permits are discretionary. Um, so if one were to make the findings that this particular duplex couldn't work, then, you know, it wouldn't be constructed. So what this not new law, if it goes through, would change would be that it would no longer require a conditional use permit. You can just build that duplex on a single family lot. And then there's another component that has to do with um subdivisions and be able, being able to split single family lots into a much smaller size. So um this one that definitely, this one definitely has our attention. And certainly, you know, any kind of change that happens to single family zoning, there's a lot of eyes on it or I guess any kind of zoning, but that's certainly one. So um Kristen, Commissioner Clements, I think that's um an excellent um suggestion. And at least to, as an informational item, kind of give a presentation to the commission on some of the things that might be coming forward. And again, like you said, this is all in the spirit of getting, you know, more housing to be built, you know, then basically.
And uh just one more note, Lisa, we're tracking AB 215 on the housing element. It's a Dave Chu bill, um, which is a little more punitive, I think, for those that don't meet housing goals. So um, I can send you the link in the chat, if I can do a chat. I don't think I can. I'll send you a link.
That would be great. Yeah. Um, and I know you have a lot of great resources, so feel free to share.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, sure.
And then we can bring something back to the commission as an informational item, definitely. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions before we see if anyone is in the waiting room would like to speak?
I had a question prompted by that conversation just then, that where does San Carlos rank in achieving its goals relative to our, to comparative cities? How, how good or bad are we doing relatively?
I would have to take a look and bring that back to you. Yeah, I think after April 1, you know, maybe we can take a really good look and see, you know, the overall progress just sort of, you know, it's sort of, it's interesting. I think it's really helpful to take a picture, you know, at the county level, you know, how, how are we doing? And you know, that could potentially give us some information where we might see a neighboring jurisdiction, maybe they're doing really well on their very low and low, and we might want to talk to them and see what they're doing. Like, why is it working there? So I think that's a great suggestion, Commissioner Roof.
We might consider having someone come from Elements 21, since they collect the data.
Certainly.
Not, not that Lisa couldn't do it, of course, but.
Well, they're working on this every single day. This is their, that's their one, you know, this is their focus. Yeah.
And that's an excellent idea. Any other questions before we see if there's anyone in the waiting room? All right. If you would like to make a public comment on this agenda item, now is the time to speak. Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room?
Not at this time.
Okay. And Lisa, you mentioned that the next step is you will be presenting this item to the city council and then pending that approval, it gets submitted to the state?
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, Lisa. That was an excellent presentation and a good discussion. Thank you very much. All right. Our next agenda item is the report on recent city council actions.
Yes, thank you, Chair. There is one item that I'd like to inform the Planning Commission about in terms of recent city, city council actions. In case you hadn't heard, the council has adopted what's called a REACH code. It basically creates local energy standards to electrify new construction and achieve greenhouse gas reduction goals. So this new ordinance, REACH code, goes into effect next month in April. I'll have to check on the exact date. But basically, it will require new construction of all building types to be all electric. But there are some exceptions. Rooftop solar in non-residential and high-rise residential buildings would be required. An electric vehicle charging readiness for all building types is another requirement as well. And we do have an FAQ on the city website under the building division. You can look into that if you're interested, but it's referred to as the REACH code. So I just wanted to share that with the commission.
All right. Thank you. Any planning commission comments or reports from my fellow commissioners? I don't have any.
No.
None for me.
None for me.
Hearing none, we'll move on to our correspondence.
I don't have any this evening.
Any planning staff comments, reports, or updates on current projects?
Yes, I have a couple of things. So I put together a slide so I can share this with the commission. You recall at your last meeting, there was an application to convert the current apartments at 977 Laurel to a condominium. And as stated in the minutes that were just adopted this evening, this application was denied. And since that time, the applicant has submitted an appeal. So basically, this means that the matter will go before the city council. We don't have a date for that yet, but that's something that needs to be scheduled within 45 days of receiving, not heard, but scheduled within 45 days of receiving the application. So it won't take too long before it gets to the city council. We wanted to let you know that, that you should expect to see another electronic billboard along Highway 101 for your review sometime this summer. And then also this summer, design review for 77 Industrial, which is where there is a fairly significant renovation of the existing Honda dealership to a life science use, is likely to come forward as well as an application from 1030 Britton. The company is known as MBC BioLabs. And these are projects where they were originally submitted as a planned development. So the commission may recall that for any planned development, it requires city council approval. They're rethinking their plans. And without getting into too much detail, it may be that they are not going to be asking for a planned development and just use the base zoning that is currently applied, applicable to those sites, in which case they can come forward to Planning Commission for Planning Commission review and not need to go to city council. So that may be coming this summer. Most of the other large developments are on hold pending the outcome of the East Side Innovation District Vision Study that is, that is going to get kicked off actually next week. Other news is that we're currently working on and preparing for the third workshop for our focused general plan update, primarily updated, updating the housing element. As I mentioned, look out for that late April and early May. We'll be doing all of the notification and outreach once we land on a date. I mentioned in other news, the Let's Talk Housing, a new website for San Mateo County and all the cities, letstalkhousing.org, just to reshare that one more time. And then just an announcement or another announcement promoting our first workshop for the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan, which is scheduled for next Wednesday, March 24 at 6:00 PM. And just as a reminder, basically, for anyone who would like to attend, you go to sancarlosinnovation.org. And once you go to that website, you can access the link to register. And once you register, you will be sent an email, which is likely to go out at the end of this week with all of the meeting details, the link to access the meeting, which is going to be held using Zoom. So we are just making sure that anyone who might watch this or the replay of this and hasn't heard about it before, has the opportunity to be aware and, and participate in this upcoming workshop. And so far, I think we have about 160 something. Sarah Codona is actually tracking the numbers so she can chime in here in a minute. But we actually have somewhere in the 160s in terms of people who have already registered for this workshop. So this is really getting some attention and we're getting a lot of registrants, which is a great thing. So again, feel free to pass this on to your neighbors and business associates and all your networks. This is a very exciting plan for our city and it's going to be done in nine months. The plan will be coming before you in September this year. So we're on a really fast track to, to get a really great project completed. So it can form, inform all the development activity going on on the east side. And those, that includes my announcements. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And one last question. Lisa, do you envision there will be a Planning Commission meeting the first Wednesday, Monday in April?
I believe so.
All right. With that, thanks, everybody. And this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
I got my, my second shot this week.
Oh, great. Now we need them.
It's an advantage, it's an advantage of being an old geezer.
Stay healthy, Don.
All right. Thank you.
Everyone.
Thanks all.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.